...spring break and it's a little confusing. I'll try to announce it again at the end of the meeting in case someone else comes in later. May I have a motion to review and accept the agenda?
So moved.
A second if, okay.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
John Mastin?
Yes.
Lisa Ramon?
Yes.
Archiana L E R?
Yes.
Big Pops.
Yes. And I would like to welcome our student. It's nice to see students here. And I'm turning the meeting up to our superintendent, Mrs. Simon.
Thank you, good evening. I'd like to take you through the agenda for this week, Thursday, day after tomorrow. On our recognition of visitors, we do not have any other presentations except for our L H C E A presentation. This time on the consent agenda, we have the minutes of our regular session from February nineteenth, and we also have the work sessions from February twelfth and February thirteenth, if you have any questions on any of those minutes. The personnel report is four point one point three. Any questions on the personnel report? Our gifts and donations, four point one point four. Again, you'll notice that there are many more listings in the text on the gifts and donations descriptions. These are the ones that are for clubs and so forth. Then our regular gifts and donations are noted as well. Four point one point five is our overnight travel. This time we have a request for the STEM club at the high school to attend the Science Olympiad at ASU in Tempe. We have a trip for the Key Club, which is a Saturday trip. And then we also have a trip for Havasu Five, which is the children's discovery museum. Those are the three that are on this budget. Any questions on that?
No questions, but, you know, I was doing a lot of reading at the break. And I'm curious because we seem to be pushing a real environmental agenda in our schools. And so I know this is in the consent agenda, but for the remainder of my time on the board, I'm going to start calculating the carbon footprint for the miles traveled for each of these trips. So I don't know how to do that without stopping at the agenda because I want to make a note of it for the kids mostly because I feel like that's a double message. We do a lot of travel and at the same time they're being told things that just don't comport with lowering your carbon footprint. And the reason I say that is because I went in and did a calculation on, there's so many websites. And the average sixteen-year-old's carbon footprint that does travel for school events and whatnot, especially in rural areas, is larger than the carbon footprint of some people who are eighty years old. So I think it's important for context for our kids to understand what that means as they want to go green and this new green deal is coming up and it's definitely being pushed, not because of our school, but in education. It's important for them to understand what those consequences mean, like giving up your cellphones and your laptops and your TVs and your vehicles. So, that's all.
Moving into old business, we do have the second reading of our policy on security. Again, there have been no changes made in this since the first reading. We also have our second reading of the review of the policy on secondary pay plans. And this, as you will recall, the change that was made was adding high school back in on the first page of that policy. It's not reflected in the packet here, I know. Oh yes, it is, I apologize. I missed it. It's on page three. I thought it would come back in now. So that one has had no changes either. And that is the end of old business. Starting into new business, which is section six. The first item on the agenda is to award the food service management company. The original agenda item that was sent out did not indicate because the recommended company was being reviewed by A D E and we didn't want to make a recommendation without A D E having approved that recommendation. And so you did receive a new item six point one for awarding the bid to the food service management company and we are recommending that that bid be awarded to power. This provides some summary of the information about how this came about. And then you also received the scores from each of the evaluators as well as the A D E approval letter. Do you really have any questions on six point one?
And the evaluation committee, were there any parents or community members involved?
The three of us mentioned in the factual.
The reason why I ask is because we hear from time to time quality of school lunch in our community and I just wanted to make sure that if we're going over a contract at this size and scope that we at least involve parents, community members, somebody outside the district in that thought process at some level. Thank you.
It would be nice to something like food services that a parent's alcohol pad a lot and the students do as well to have a parent.
Understanding that this is a documentation review and not necessarily have any opportunity to assess the food quality of the other vendors who have applied and not certain, and not certain what done.
Well, and I'm not saying that we have a substandard product at our schools now. I just know that this does come up in the general consciousness of our community at the time. And having some type of an outlet or input point, whether it's directly tied to the point of contract or just prior to that, where we get solicit even in a survey manner of what the parents in our community thought about food service and the quality thereof. It's fine to have documentation of the review and it's fine to look at pricing and so on because those are all valid concerns. But on the same side of that is, are we getting quality and are we getting buy-in from the participants within the program? And if we aren't, then maybe we've got a problem in our thought process beyond just simply checking the boxes and making sure the documentary is good on it.
The challenge, I completely agree with that. If this was a homegrown RFP that we're allowed to go ahead and produce in-house, that would allow us that flexibility, but because this is an RFP given to us by the state, we're bound by the criteria in which we have to evaluate. So that, I completely agree, I believe we're kind of stuck in the middle with that between trying to venture out and gather soliciting input. But the three criteria here that's noted is very specific and it's given not just for this district, but it's given by the A D E to the district and all districts issuing RFPs at this time.
I don't disagree with that thought. Perhaps it's something that we could incorporate post-contract at some point where we could solicit thought process from the community and try to work with our vendor.
I do, I think that if Mrs. Tate is planning to be here at the meeting on Thursday, that would be a good question because I do know that they monitor and survey and do some things to assess the quality of the food and get input from their students who are actually consuming the food. She could probably speak more to that process and how often we conduct those surveys as ever.
Thank you.
And a lot of it comes down to the feds too, doesn't it, requirements, not just A D E, it's a federal program.
Yes, that's true. A lot of it though is from the state level. Just to keep it uniform throughout the state so that we're all evaluating companies on the same platform, on the same foundational level.
But since the food is federal funded, they do have certain requirements that are identified here. Any other questions? Item six point two, this is the request to approve the parchment online transcript services for the high school. We started investigating having an online transcript service. I can't even think how many months ago it has been. And we did have parchment come out and do a presentation and invited at that time work president, Mr. Mazzini, to be a part of it. We've had several issues with our students being able to get transferred transcripts, excuse me, to the colleges in a timely manner. What happens is because so much is done electronically, the students have found that when we do paper transcript process, their transcripts get sent in, they sit in their rooms, they don't get reused quickly. If there's a short timeline, they don't have an opportunity necessarily to access someone to order transcripts through. And so this would be a process for students to be able to online order their transcripts. The students themselves initially would receive a free transcript. Upon graduation, they would get all free unofficial transcripts. And if they apply for the community scholarship, they would get a free official transcript. For the remainder of transcripts that they wanted sent out to colleges or other organizations, it would cost five dollars for current students. And the student participation fee are what covers the cost of the service. The district does have a cost to this service. Any questions on that one?
A few. So, under the proprietary rights and the intellectual property rights in the contract, this is going to highlight the concern that I have anytime we're told something's free. And my concern is when I'm reading, like on five point four, for example, at the very end, member will not engage in any act or omission that would impair parchment and/or its licensor's intellectual property rights in the services and any other materials, information, processes, or subject matter proprietary to parchment. Member further acknowledges that parchment retains the right to use the foregoing for any purpose and parchment is sole discretion. So this is concerning one example, and I don't know if I'm reading that right because I'm not a lawyer, but my concern is that they now own the student data. And in the action item, it doesn't say what data points, it just says transcript. So I'm not sure what data we're going to populate this with. And then I'm concerned that they retain the rights to it. And yes, they go on and on about how they're going to comply with FERPA, but that brings me no comfort for our students whatsoever.
So when we start talking about intellectual copyrights in the contract like this, I read that as software construct.
I understand that, but we're also talking about the student data.
I don't see that called out specifically in that paragraph.
Well, not in that paragraph, okay, that's fine. I'm not, I'm just questioning what data we're giving them because transcripts is broad.
So, so if you go up to five three, right above it, I think this would be more along the lines where you might have a concern that de-identified data. Parchment may create de-identified data from member data. Parchment may create de-identified data from any data it collects or receives in connection with parchment services. Parchment may use and disclose such de-identified data for any lawful purpose provided that it is used in such a manner that does not permit de-identified data of any credential owner. So basically what that paragraph means is that when they do receive this data, they can take this data and they can call non-identified information from it and then monetize that. And that's really their backend where they make the money.
Okay. So, we...
So just for the services that we are looking at, the transcript, which, and somebody else will be able to answer this, probably one of the counselors in the room, but is the actual transcript report that comes out of our system. And so that is the piece that's uploaded, is just the transcript report. And the service that we would have is transcript, being able to run transcript, be able to verify graduation and be able to verify enrollment. So those are the three things that students could request through this service.
Quick question for the counselor. Is a transcript something, let's say I have somebody I'm going to employ and I want to make sure they have a certain grade point average. Is their transcript, as in a college transcript or a high school transcript, a public document that I can or be received?
You cannot unless the student requests it.
Okay. So this is a student releasing that information or the parents of the student releasing that information?
If they're a current high school student, it has to be the student. Or the parent can do it as well.
Right.
Once they graduate, it has to be the student.
Right. So this is a voluntary release of information?
Yes. And we don't send anything without a permission from someone. Even, our students have to come in and sign a form to get transcripts sent.
Any other comments or questions, Nicole, about that?
I do, but I don't have it marked right here, but there was a specific place where it spoke about the student data giving it up. And I don't have, but I'll have it on Thursday, I guess.
And I think Mr. Becker will be here. Okay, and I think Mr. Becker will be here prepared to answer the questions that you might have. Reading to this, we did have our attorney, it doesn't say on here, but...
It does.
It's actually said to.
It's centrally lodged, it would say.
Yes, and actually she's reviewed it and approved it as a form. So we didn't find anything that was a concern.
And I want to make sure that we are still maintaining our database of these records.
Right, so the only reason that they get it is we upload it to them. We maintain that within our system, absolutely. And there's a lot of access for unofficial, you know, students will get their unofficial transcripts for a number of things, but these are the ones that they would have requested officially to be sent somewhere.
So, and I can't find it right now because it's so many pages and I didn't mark it, but I was reading that the students will go in and make their, they have a log-on or whatever, right? So then this company gets their email addresses. And I was reading in there about how all that is owned by the company. And so my concern is that's a lot of data, private data, that we're starting to talk about. If they're going to sell that, if they're going to monetize that because it's free and then, you know, the onslaught of marketing that happens because of that and so anyways, that was part of my concern. But if legal has reviewed it and they don't think it's a problem, then who might have seen it?
Well, and in section seven, it does specifically talk about confidentiality and the measures that they take to protect student confidentiality.
FERPA. Are you familiar with FERPA? It's been guided, it's useless.
Well, they put into their contract that they will protect confidentiality. And I think the overarching concern is that students would be able to access their transcripts, which of course they'll need.
Sure, absolutely.
So we have to provide a way for them to be able to do that.
I understand. But we also need to make sure that we're doing what we can, at least to have the discussion about their data because those discussions don't happen around student data. And we haven't seen what's going to happen with that while we have, but...
One of the things that I specifically asked for and they were able to answer after a little bit of digging in the presentation was whether or not this was handled correctly as far as encryption and transmission and those types of things. And a lot of things we do in modern society, whether it's medical or legal or in this case student achievement records, a lot of this stuff has gone to the point where people are now expecting it to be electronically available.
Right, I understand.
And with that, you do give up a little bit of privacy or a little bit of security for convenience. And while you and I are probably of the same mindset on that, at the same time, you can't put a student in a position where they may get penalized or have a problem with their admission because we can't keep up with what the other side of this equation is expecting. That said, knowing that it's a secure transmission, knowing that they're not monetizing identifying information, which would mean that email address wouldn't be a monetized point based on their contract, knowing these things and it's been reduced to writing in a legal document, I think that this is probably the most secure known solution that I've seen. Beats my kid taking a snapshot of his transcript with his phone and texting it off to N A U.
Well, they wouldn't accept that.
Actually, they do.
They do.
Really?
Not for two admissions, but for...
Then what's the point? Why are we going to spend all this money? Just tell them to take their phone and come and take a snapshot?
That won't be for admissions, it'd be for other things.
Right. They'll take your initial deposit.
I did try to get through that and also there's supposed to be a PowerPoint that showed it. Maybe that would have explained it better. The action item said that a PowerPoint was sent to the board, but I can't find it.
You guys didn't receive that?
Yeah. So that might, maybe that would be more helpful for me to understand it too.
Can a student opt out or a parent opt out of this or is it...
It's completely voluntary if the student wants to participate.
Okay, but we're going to send all this information regardless.
No, it's an option.
That would be a question, although Mr. Becker is here, but my understanding is initially that we're just going to upload the measure question.
That's what I thought.
It's completely optional.
Okay. Well, if it's opted in, that's, should have started with that.
It's time we leave with that.
I thought I read that all of our data was going to be uploaded and you had the option to upload prior.
I think you're right about that, that's what we initially started with because the students would not be able to get anything but unofficial transcripts from the office except for the two that we planned on providing. So it would be that current students would only need to get, would only be able to get official transcripts through this service. I think it was for, initially we weren't going to upload for all of our alumni information. Item six point three is the request for approval of the compensation package for nineteen twenty. And this is, the information that was presented to the board at the retreat on the thirteenth has been slightly updated. This proposal will include a base salary increase for certified and classified staff, seven fifty for certified, four hundred for classified, and then a five percent one-time cola for all employees paid in two separate checks. And then it also is, covers the compliance with Prop 206 with an annual wage going up to twelve dollars per hour. And so there would be either the four hundred dollars for classified staff or the minimum wage increase, whichever is greater. So they don't get both in that particular situation. This also includes an increase of approximately seven percent to the premiums for the benefits for each individual employee and does continue to transition the dependent benefits cost back to the employee. The proposal sustains the current athletic fees and this proposal is in addition to the compensation our certified staff received through three oh one funding. Mr. Murray will present a brief PowerPoint presentation on the proposal to the board at the meeting on Thursday.
So, I do have a question, not on the compensation because we were part of that and I understand all that, but on the actual contract that was inserted for the teacher contract. On, what is that, ten eleven, well, thirteen fourteen, Arizona standards? So, and I actually called Diane Douglas because I thought she might have the answer to this, but it says Arizona standards, employees acknowledge that the state requires curriculum and instruction to be aligned with the Arizona academic standards. I don't think that's true. I don't think that's statutorily true. And the only thing that I could recall was back before I was on the board, they signed the, what was it called, Declaration of Alignment. But that was not a law, that was not from the S V E or the legislature. It was from the A D E. And that was one of the first things that Diane got rid of when she started. So, because that whole section is bothersome to me for multiple reasons. One of them is that the state requires curriculum be aligned. Well, if the standards are just what we expect students, they have no business requiring the curriculum aligned. We can use whatever curriculum we want to teach the standards because they're just standards. Would that be correct?
Yes, we can use whatever.
Okay. And then the instruction to be aligned. Anyways, they're acknowledging that this is a requirement and I guess I just took issue with that because it popped out at me as I was reading through it. So, am I misreading that?
I think the intent of this is that you don't get to come in and teach whatever you want, that we have a set of standards and that you're required to ensure that you're aligning with what our standards are. I'm not certain that, I don't know about the statutory on the Arizona standards. Do you know, Bren? No, so we can find that out.
Well, and a simple word change on that from state to district would make it a whole other statement, in my opinion. Because the district is employing the teachers and the teachers need to comply with whatever the district is asking them to do. This is not a state mandatory thing, though.
I would, I would say that we can keep those understandings in there. And I agree with you, that's a big...
I don't have a problem with any of it, except the state requiring it.
Well, the state requires that you teach the standards. And so, and so maybe what it should say is employee acknowledges that the state required standards must be taught, something along that line. As opposed, because right there, what it says is that, is that state requires curriculum instruction to be aligned and there's no requirement for that. There's a requirement to teach the standard, but there's no requirement for what you use to get there.
I know it seems like a small thing and I'm picking, so let me tell you why it bothers me. Employee acknowledges that the state requires curriculum instruction to be aligned with the Arizona academic standards. When this was Common Core, that sentence essentially says the state requires curriculum to be aligned with Pearson, McGraw-Hill, and blah blah blah, whatever the third one was. Because all the major textbook companies are aligned. And I think that takes what little control all the districts have to worry about curriculum and it kind of convolutes it all in the same sentence because the state is requiring curriculum. State doesn't have anything to do with curriculum.
That is true.
And that's what bothers me about it. That's all.
And we're now telling the employee that they must do the facts.
Right. So if you had a dis, let's just say when I first got on the board and we had Common Core all intact, the state requires curriculum be aligned to Common Core, that took the, you know, that meant that you were forced to use certain materials in order to comply with these standards. And then, and I talked through this with Diane and she says, well, what if the state had, let me play devil's advocate, what if the state had implemented Hillsdale standards a few months ago? Would you still have a problem with it? What would you do then? I said, well, yeah, it probably wouldn't have jumped out at me like it did, but on a principled level, I would have a problem with it because the alternative is you teach how you're going to teach in your district because it's supposed to be local and there are criteria that you're going to meet. You've got a bunch of professionals teaching, but if they would have implemented the Hillsdale, it would have come out in the testing. Because all of the curriculum and the testing is aligned and so this kind of, this one sentence takes all the authority out of the different places that it's supposed to be spread. One of them is the board, in my opinion.
Could we just change the word state to the district?
That's what I meant. That's what I, I just didn't want to have the two together, people thinking that the state has anything to say about curriculum or our instruction. Those are our decisions or the leadership's decisions when it comes to instruction and the board's decision when it comes to curriculum and I just didn't want it to...
So state replaced with district? I don't see any reason that can happen.
I'm gonna go really quickly.
I'm just curious, and maybe there is a statute that we couldn't find, but we were trying to find where there was a mandate for alignment and you couldn't.
Okay. That actually is a...
One more, sorry. And then, and I asked this before, we didn't get an answer a couple of years ago. So, the contracts. The signed contract must be received by the appropriate human resources department unaltered within fifteen business days of this agreement or it's null and void. It used to say April fifteenth, if I remember correctly. There was a specific date.
The law changed.
It did, okay. So what is the law now?
Fifteen business days. So you could, there's districts that issued contracts in February. There's issues, there's districts that will issue contracts in late April. Fifteen days, business days for you when you get your contract.
Okay, and that is solely for budgeting purposes? We need to know who we're hiring, who we're, you know, recruiting for.
It's in statute that contracts have fifteen business days.
From the time you let them go, but they don't say when you have to put them out?
No.
Okay, so this is my question. Because this all takes place right before the legislature's done every year, and that's a cluster. I mean, how much easier is it to know what you're dealing with before you make these commitments? And I say that one last thing in conjunction with, I read about the stipends for national board certified teacher. So, and I understand why that's important, but that's committing a lot of things before you have a budget and it seems insane to me. So if we were able to release our contracts, not that this is what we're gonna do, I'm just wondering if it would be possible, can we wait to have a budget, a state budget, before we make commitments that we have to then scramble through the next year to maintain?
Well, one of the concerns we have is competition with other districts, because other districts are issuing those contracts and teachers don't wanna break their contract once they sign and commit. So if we wait till the very end, teachers might jump ship or they'll be looking at that piece or we're not able to recruit other teachers who we're wanting to recruit to the district. It's very competitive with recruitment.
I would say we're probably among the later of the districts in what we talked and we felt like we wanted, we needed to be at least a little bit into the legislative session to kind of get a feel before we issued contracts, but there's districts that are issuing contracts now in February for exactly what Abby said, so that they have teachers signed. Because when you're waiting till May, teachers start looking and competition is pretty fierce. And so there is definitely a move to bring this up, but I'd say we're toward the later. And we also talked about what happened last year, that contracts were issued and then we had to like have a do-over and we didn't after that.
For that reason.
Right.
Exactly that reason.
Well, and that's kind of my thing, and I know that it's very competitive, less so here, though, I think, because of where we're at. It's not like, it's more competitive, I think, in the big cities, because you can live in Phoenix and work in fifteen different cities, depending on who's gonna pay you more.
But we also need to know who we're hiring.
Of course.
And so that's the, it's like a double-edged sword.
Okay. Well, I'm glad it doesn't say a specific date anymore, but I didn't realize that the law had changed, so.
And we do have, before we do any of our budget planning, we have a lot of information that we know is solid. And so we will have something like happened last year where some, we're not expecting that additional funding. In most cases, we're able to sustain whatever our budgets are for that year and revise for the following year.
Well, last year was an easy problem.
Yes.
But it's when they take away the funds after you've issued the contracts, when you're guessing about how many students are gonna be there, so.
Okay, well, that was actually in item six point four. And this was the approval of the staff list for nineteen twenty certified staff list. And then item six point five is for the classified staff list. Any other questions on those two items? Item six point six, this is the request to approve the expansion of our contract for frontline services. We are looking at a couple of areas that we have a need to have a better system for, and so that would be, there's four different areas. There's evaluation management, recruiting and hiring software, digital forms, and record retention. The talent management software is, we currently use Binocular and that is a very updated system. It's very cumbersome. It doesn't work, interact with any of our other systems. And so this would replace Binocular, which would save us approximately seven thousand dollars, which would be applied then to the price of this process. We also have a, and Binocular is the talent management as well, where we post our jobs, et cetera. And then currently, we don't have any way of keeping track of our evaluations. They're being done on Excel spreadsheets. And so it's very time-intensive to collect and then enter in the data, who's complete, all of that. And so this would provide that valuation management software. And then the time and attendance, which is a digital time clock system, this would allow us to eliminate the paper time cards and allow us to track our time and save all that time on the data entry. So those are the four components that we're looking toward adding and the information is provided here if you have any questions.
Is it a biometric time tracking system?
Uh-uh.
You could. Like, that's an option, but you can do it all sorts of different ways.
Okay.
You could use GPS. You could, you can choose what you want to do, but you can just kind of do a clocking system.
No retinal scans?
No, you could if you wanted to.
No, we don't want to. I don't think anybody wants to.
Spit in a cup.
DNA, DNA watching.
Right. Just 'cause you brought it up, it's still, it's still illegal to biometrically scan our children, correct? Just for the record?
As I know.
Okay.
Just checking.
Is it going to be a lot of training required, needed for classified and intensive or would it be easy, like a one-two workshop?
So, frontline is currently the system that we use for our absence management. So we're already in that system, so people are used to it. But certainly, there's gonna be training. This is actually gonna be rolled out over the course of the year. We're not putting all of these products right at the beginning, because it's going to be too much for us to do. There's gonna have to be training for administrators for the evaluation system. There's going to be, have to be training for the office staff. So we're rolling each piece out separately, because we know there's training involved with the core users and then all staff members.
Which piece do you think will roll out first?
We're gonna roll out the evaluation system first.
Item six point seven, this is a suggested policy for the board. There was a request at the last meeting that we did not have our curriculum philosophy statement in our actual board policy. And so this proposal is to bring it into the section I as the board's introductory statement for instructional goals and objectives. So what you'll see is the previous I A crossed out and then the curriculum philosophy statement. And then what is new for the board would be the list of bulleted items on page two of two of that policy, which are a revision of the list that is on the original policy.
On page two of two, the third bullet down, would anyone object to adding a phrase that says ability to conduct research and think, and I would like to put and think and write critically about history, science, literature, and the arts? Is there any opposition to adding and write critically?
I have no opposition to that. The only thing that I wondered about was we don't have, we don't have worldview in here at all. We have competing truth claims, but that seemed to stop short of the discussion in our philosophy meetings.
This is the statement that was adopted by the board?
Well, I'm talking about like this bullet, that's, I understand it was the statement adopted by the board, but the context of the statement adopted by the board was understanding the different worldviews out there and what they represented or what the rules that they follow, because how can the students discern truth if they don't understand the different worldviews that are being placed in front of them? And so if we don't use the actual word term worldviews, I don't know that people are gonna understand that that's what we're referring to in the context of being able to discern truth or analyze competing truth claims. That's what that sentence was talking about. I mean, that's what we were discussing, so I just wonder...
So are you saying that we should add something on the list here?
I don't know that we, well, maybe in the same one, and maybe in the same one that Kathy was just talking about, read and write critically about history, science, literature, the arts, and worldviews. Because you do have to research worldviews in order to understand the origin of whatever discipline you're looking at or subject you're looking at. There's research that goes into it, which means you have to look at those two competing truth claims or ten competing truth claims, and those are all different worldviews. I don't know if that's the right place for it. I just wanna make sure that...
What do you think of think and communicate instead of just write?
Is your microphone on?
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, what do you think of think and communicate critically instead of just think and write?
That would be, that would define, make.
Well, we actually have think critically in bullet point three. And skills in English, language literacy, and communication is bullet point number one.
Well, I mean, my preference, and we're getting off on the coles point about the worldviews, but let's stick with yours. You're suggesting on bullet three that we say, and to think and communicate critically. Is that what you're saying?
And that's what I thought, because why just write? You would speak, you would do so many other things. That's what I was just trying to make it broader.
Okay, and I would think I was trying to limit it, because I would like to see more writing, writing in the curriculum and that's, you know, what the book by Mike Schmoker's book is. And that, just as a suggestion. Go ahead.
I view this as a philosophy, much more than a way to pigeonhole or narrow. This is, this is a guiding set of principles. And so if we add or subtract or change anything at this point after we've adopted this already, this is just codifying into policy, we've adopted this statement. I think that we do ourselves a disservice at some level. And while I would agree that Kathy has a point, Cole has a point, I think that we've already gone through a process and put together a document and here it sits. Now, is going into policy or not, I think is what the issue is before us and I think as we, as we look at this and try and change it, we're getting off topic.
So the, excuse me. Up to the point where it defines critical thinkers, which is at the top of page two, that is the section that the board had previously adopted. And then the next section is the original I A policy we worked. And so the question would be, you have the philosophy statement and then you have the specifics listed from there and that's the piece that the board has never reviewed. So I think that would be appropriate to look at those and to review and revise those.
But if we were to do what Nicole is suggesting and change the philosophical piece up at the top, we would probably have to reconvene to do that, but we could add something down to the list.
This is now coming to you as a policy to approve as a policy.
Right.
So I think, I think because you've adopted that and voted on it, that would be the case. My understanding of the suggestion was that bullet three would read ability to conduct research and think and write critically about history, science, literature, the arts, and worldviews.
Correct.
Was the suggested combination of changes.
Because the top one, yes, I wouldn't make recommendations to change, because that was adopted and we did go through a big process. But during that process, there was a lot of talk about the competing truth claims, the propaganda. That's why that's all defined in, but we did a lot of discussion over being able to discern between the different worldviews. And so that's, I think it's important to have it in the bottom, not trying to redo what we already did.
Can you define world view? Can you give us a definition of world view? What you mean when you say use that word?
Yeah, well, there's, okay, there's socialism is a worldview, Marxism is a worldview, Christianity is a worldview. There's a whole plethora of worldviews that we're teaching in our schools, kind of, and again, not our teachers aren't teaching social, that's not what I mean, but it's coming into our schools, kind of in bits and pieces and the students aren't understanding where that originated. Where does that idea come from? And those are worldviews.
Okay, but maybe I'm not being quite clear. I was just curious how you would define worldview, like you could give me some examples of religions and economic systems.
Your belief system.
It's belief, okay.
Yes, your belief system. That's a worldview.
A particular philosophy of life or conception of the world is the definition. And an example sentence listed here, and this is just a quick online, I have broadened my worldview by experiencing that home culture.
So for this policy, the meeting Thursday, you would need to, whoever's gonna move to approve to adjust these changes. Six point eight, these are revised policy and a new regulation regarding the transfer of credits and admission of test for students. In reviewing policy and working with the high school, we discovered that we were not completely aligned in our policy to statute. And so we have, just on the policy page, a couple of changes. There's the clarification of statute, a change in the paragraph on evaluating transcripts, because what we found is that we were not having consistency in how we were accepting student grades and credits. And so that clarifies those pieces within the policy. Then we developed a new regulation, and this regulation is for the admission of transfer students and this clarifies the detail for our staff at the high school when students come in or when they bring in transcripts from higher education or other school systems, school options. The final thing that this does in this particular regulation is it does change our weighting at the high school. And so on the page two of two, the last, last couple of paragraphs, we currently have a system that we weight student grades at a point three-five if they're in honors class. And when students apply to college, they have to check whether their, their grades are a four-point or a five-point scale. So our students cannot count the weighted grades. They have to go by their four-point grading scale. And that does make them a little bit less competitive. So this aligns us with what most colleges and the high schools throughout the state use, which is a five-point grading scale for honors classes. It also brings in the information that is in statute, excuse me, it's not in statute, it's in the Arizona administrative code, that students do have an opportunity to challenge course situations.
And challenge courses, I mean that they can opt out if they need a test and...
Yes, yes. Any questions on that?
I have a question. It has to do with that, but it's not on that. It's on our Lake Havasu High School academic requirements. And that's in the handbook, you know, where it has Lake Havasu grad requirements in state university. It's like a... It's like a, do you know what I'm talking about? This page. So, when I look at the N C double A A, the athletic eligibility, and it says D1, D2, four credits, three credits for English. What is D2? Sorry?
Division 2, we can say that way.
Okay.
It's, it would be like, say, a fringe university, Wichita, Kansas, is a D2 school.
A fringe?
Friends.
Oh.
Friends.
Friends?
Friends.
Small.
A smaller school.
Small.
Small.
Like not on ESPN for sports.
Okay.
Right.
A smaller school. I just wondered about that. Because across things, across the whole spectrum, for all of the admissions requirements, it's four credits, except that D2 schools, three credits.
For athletics. N C double A's.
That's all you need to answer that.
Those moms did, getting their kids in school.
Lock them up. I'm just kidding.
The final item in a batch of items is the approval, excuse me, the vouchers and auxiliary pens. Do you have any questions on that? I would like to point out a couple of items in Section 7, which are the blue pages. We did note under the information that, for everybody to be aware, there will be no changes in the athletic participation. And this time, under the superintendent, I did include a curriculum update. Typically, I don't do that, but since I was asked to put together a plan, I wanted to include some information here. And so, what I did on that section is to review the information from our work sessions, the motion, and then what we are proposing as a plan for our curriculum work. And I would like to review that at the meeting on Thursday for you. The other area that we've included is a business services update because we did present to the board our auditor general's report. And we did receive an updated annual report since we had our board retreat. And so, this is included for you in the packet as well. We have our updates from personnel and also special services.
A question for business services. Were we able to complete the flooring change under both rooms?
Yes, that was included.
One piece of feedback that I did have for the curriculum, as we're reviewing that, setting that, there was some concern that the meetings might take place over the summer and that they might compete with summer school and force some teachers to choose between teaching summer school or participating on the curriculum committees. And so, I was just asked to pass along the, make sure that they would like those to not compete with each other if possible.
And as far as I understand, summer school doesn't start that week, does it?
Yes, it does.
It does start that week? Okay. Was I right about that?
Okay, anything else? Okay, before I ask for a motion to adjourn, and if you came in just a little late, we will have our regular school board meeting for March this Thursday because it's spring break. And so, it starts at 6 o'clock. And I hope you come back. All right. And we have someone else who's sitting out there, too. It's nice to see there. And do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Martha Chen?
Lisa Ramon.
Yes.
Aren't you, Alan Martin?
Yes.
John Nasten?
Yes.
Nicole Coleman?
Yes.